The Spencerport Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, April 25, 2023. If you would please drive and join me in flagging.
I believe this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion through? Megan, second.
Of course. Well, we are.
It's the consent.
This is the agenda.
Hey, your name?
Um, yeah.
All right. Next order of business is privilege of the floor. We have one privilege of the floor. I would request Mr. Bardine, if you would please approach the podium. As you're approaching the podium, do our little spiel here that privilege of the floor is a chance to encourage public participation on school-related matters. Is there a student?
No.
No.
Okay. So I was allocated a period not to exceed 30 minutes. Remarks must be limited to five minutes or less. And we may in its discretion require of any group or organization wishing to address the board identify a single spokesperson. Board is not required to, but the president and/or superintendent may thereafter briefly respond to any other public comment or may thereafter respond in writing. State your name and address. A district clerk may report this and all remarks must comply with board policy 3220 governing public expression. Mr. Bardine, you're aware we have five-minute limits to these things and I'll give you kind of a heads up when you're getting close. Okay? Go ahead.
My name is Donald Bardine. I live at Six Ridge Meadows Drive in Spencerport, New York. I wrote, I have some question first of all. Would New York state funding be reduced if gender ideology was not taught or presented in the Spencerport School District? My first question. I understand we may be answered by science of the equation on that subject. I'm going to ask you a simple question. If we did not teach it in Spencerport, would the New York state funding be impacted or the news anyway should it form? And if so, the answer is yes. Please explain how in full watch these. I also have some comments regarding the limitations of the privilege of the floor as currently implemented. And to highlight this, I'm not going to reiterate a lot. As you may be aware, you may remember, I asked a couple of specific questions on January 24th, 23. Regarding what our students were being presented with and taught on the subject of gender ideology at the grade school level. And it was, I got a letter back from, an email back from, I believe it was Mr. Bracken or Mr. Desalik, I don't know. It was Mr. Bracken indicating that they were confused by my questions and I clarified those at the February 28th meeting. And I noted that, I didn't note that. I went back and looked at the board minutes for the February 28th meeting. In fact, maybe I should read them to you. I'm understanding what I'm going to say next. The board minutes for February 28th, under privilege of the floor, it says, "Community member Donald Bardine in Bridge Meadows Drive spoke before the board. He asked if any changes have been implemented following recent policy." That's another question. He also, Mr. Bardine again shared his concern for gender ideology and clarified his past questions regarding teaching gender identity to K-6 students by anyone employed by the school district. He was referred to the New York State Department of Education for correcting information. Now, I am going to reread something I said to you on the 28th of February. Should you find it less, I read this. You could have a copy of this tonight if you wish. Said, "Should you find it necessary to refer to the New York State Department of Education? Please answer the above questions either yes or no to number one and yes or no to number two. Based on their curriculum and learning standards. If your answer is no, is that a no both from New York State Department of Education and also a no from the Spencerport School Board and also from Superintendent Swan and her entire staff? And I highlight this to try and make you understand. I asked a fairly straightforward question. You might not like the questions. I don't know. But in order to give me the types of answers that I'm getting, it makes me feel, and maybe I'm wrong, but it makes me feel like you don't want to answer the question. And I'm asking you to answer those questions. Now, you may refuse to answer them. I understand you have no requirement to answer my questions. That's one of the reasons I think that this concept of privilege of the floor falls way short in creating, you know, I've said in the past how we don't have a lot of the community involved, involved in the district. And I think this is one reason. I think a large section of our community that, I mean, I don't know. I'm sure you don't either know how they feel. Wouldn't it be interesting to know in our community, how many people agree with me and how many people agree with you for instance? Wouldn't you like to know? I would if I were you. I, I'll leave that at that for now. I will be here again and hopefully, if, you want to copy this, Mr. Bracken. I'll leave it here.
All right. Thank you.
And please answer my questions. At least respond to my questions. Thank you.
Hey, next order of business is consent agenda. Do I have a motion for consent agenda?
Sure. Yeah. So I just wanted to make a comment on that first. After going through the materials, I did have an issue with item number 4.25, which relates to pesticide application to some of our athletic fields and whether or not that's in line with the legislation known as the Child Safety Plan Field Act. So we're going to look into that a little bit more in a future meeting. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number 4.25. And that motion will also include the certificated attendum that we were provided at tonight's meeting.
Second. May I have any other comments or discussion? All in favor? And Board of Education reports, a couple of things over the past couple of weeks. We did the BOCs to end a meeting. Fantastic meal as always. The kids were great and got to meet our Spencerport kids and have a few words with them as well. So it was very good. Another great evening. So I encourage everybody to try to get to that if you can possibly get it on calendars or because it's really, it's a neat way to see what BOCs does for those kids and stuff. And then we did, I did the information exchange. Thanks Megan for the questions. That was very helpful. She, so she was on the Zoom call and decided to throw in some questions. We did an information. We did an information panel on board roles and things like that. It was, it was fun. It was good. Other than that, thanks.
Maybe relations is tomorrow. I'll be on it. The topic could be interesting. It's Parents Build Rights.
I will be seeing you again. I feel like there's so much that happened since last meeting and between the next meeting. So I also went to the BOC Center, the BOC Center that Gary mentioned. It was great. It was my first time attending. I loved it. I am then, I'm on the BOCs to commit for the Make All The Difference Scholarship. And spent a lot of my time reviewing the applicants for that scholarship, which has been great. Really rewarding. And we need, as a committee this week, to finalize who will be receiving that scholarship. Two committee meetings last week, the wellness committee. I know because we're not on the distribution list. That's why. I know. It's okay. I'll remind you next.
Thank you. Please.
Okay. Jamie and her team have some great ideas about initiatives for next year. I think it's awesome. I love those conversations. And the school council advisory council committee as well. Excited about the addition of, of course, the additional counselors. And then we've been meeting on the grading committee, right? Whatever. That's it. I mean, that's a lot. Yeah. So I also attended the grading committee meeting and Jonathan, Kristen and I were able to have a policy subcommittee meeting via Zoom last week. And we have some policies that we'll be bringing forward in future meetings. Nothing to add. Dave will cover safety committee that we were at today.
Yeah. So safety meeting, health and safety, just in broad stroke. They talked about the cell phone situation, what they're potentially doing. They had presentations from two guys and basically without getting into the weeds as we move forward. And they had three proposals, one being very minor changes, kind of getting back on board to where we are. For those of two was a lot more restrictive with maybe pouches or dock stations and three was a complete ban. And there's post-contractual, so they'll give that to us moving forward and we'll decide then. Mrs. Salver talked about some quota kind of changes. And personally, I'd like to thank this weekend was the Philadelphia trip for banned. And I'd like to mention Mr. McKay, Mr. Papeely, Mr. Osborne, Ms. Mass, Ms. Murphy, Ms. McLean, and their companies. I don't know her name. It took 137 kids to Philadelphia and on a scale of 1 to 10, it's an 8 in my opinion. So that's pretty good.
Yeah, 137 kids. Or no, whatever you said.
I forgot to mention, we finished up the local scholarship reviews as well. They, I think they've done the selections, but the outbrief is this Thursday. That's it.
And just to remind you, David, you're going to be in attendance tomorrow, but since the end of the year.
Oh, yes.
Rotary. So there'll be a few of our cabinet meetings and some of the staff that are going to be there.
It has slightens, right?
Yep. So they'll be nice to recognize them. So moving on to the superintendent's report, our first item is to approve tenure for some of our administrators. As the board knows, we've had multiple opportunities to talk about the great progress and the contribution of our administrators who are up to tenure have been making. So I ask for your approval further.
I think I need a motion.
A motion. Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative candidates for tenure.
Second. All in favor? So.
Okay. So first presentation, I'm going to invite Ty up to the podium. We're going to be regarding that junior achievement and some of the changes for that program. I think Ty has a number of guests that he's going to introduce as well.
Yes, thank you very much, Miss Swan. So I'm very excited to present our efforts with Junior Achievement. And with that, I'm going to turn over to our STEM Director Suzanne Goff and our liaison for Junior Achievement, Marie Camp. So we're really fortunate that we're great partners, Marie, and she's been just a wonderful asset to our students' learning experience. And really excited just to present these pending changes with Junior Achievement. Suzanne?
Good evening, Board of Education, Superintendent and colleagues. Yes, as I said, we are very excited to be here this evening and I want to first introduce my new partner here, my new community partner, Marie Camp, who is the Vice President of Learning Experiences for the Junior Achievement in Central New York. Marie, I also just want to publicly state, thank you so much for coming this evening and sharing your evening with us. I know that you didn't need to do that and we just really appreciate you taking the time to help our board learn more about premier. Thank you for inviting me. So this evening, we'll do an overview of Junior Achievement. We'll share where our partnership has been at the elementary level and where we propose that we might be able to enhance partnership in the coming year in our fifth and seventh grade classrooms. So by a show of hands, who's familiar with Junior Achievement? Okay. Love that. That's great. So Junior Achievement, our mission is to inspire and prepare young people for their economic success. We are over a hundred-year-old organization that started off as an after-school program and went into the school districts. And we do the inspiration and preparing by one, inspiring with community and volunteers. And we do preparing by our robust curriculum that aligns with state and national learning standards. So we do have three pillars of learning. You know how they always say like, when am I going to ever use this subject when I graduate from high school? Well, our three subjects are financial literacy, working career readiness and entrepreneurship. And those are three pillars of learning and that's what our goal is, is to help students achieve their economic success. As I mentioned, we're a 104-year-old organization, started off as an after-school program with the president of AT&amp;T, Scrapboard Paper and a senator in Massachusetts. And it started off as a business club, teaching students about business. We went in the seventies into the classrooms and now do programming kindergarten through 12th grade. So you think, what are you going to teach a kindergartner about financial literacy? And we teach age-appropriate curriculum and especially in the elementary level, it's volunteer-led curriculum. And we teach about wants versus needs. And then when they get to the next, you know, when they get to the first grade, second grade, when they have that sequential learning, it builds upon that. So the curriculum is very robust. The thing that separates our organization from others or where you could get curriculum is that volunteer base. We really take the volunteers and they connect what students learn in the classroom with what's going on in the community in real life. And I will share with you in terms of where Spencerport already has our partnerships with Junior Achievement. We have this at both the second grade and the third grade levels. In terms of our curriculum, grades, grade two, really focus on work and career readiness. And then in grade three, personal finance curriculum. And better than I can explain it, the pictures here are students. This here is Mrs. Wiggs' class in Canalview and these are students that are talking about communities, community helpers, taxes and blow money. And as Marie mentioned, the volunteer element is really important in this program. One of the students this year who was volunteering in Mrs. Wiggs' classroom was one of her second graders several years ago. And she's one of our high school seniors, Mackenzie Barclay, who is intending, pursuing a career in education. So just exciting opportunities for even our students, our upper-level students to partner with our younger students. This is another example. This particular one, I'm completely dating myself when I say time to make the donuts. But this is a donut production. And this is an opportunity for the students to learn about productivity and the value of, value of quality work. So the student's curriculum is that they are, they are actually fashioning donuts together. They're stickers. They're not actual food products. But they are putting these together and then the supervisors go through and essentially it is quality control relative to the donuts, how they've been produced and the time in which they've been produced. The students are given feedback on that. And then the teacher follows up in the classroom with conversations around their paychecks and pay taxes. This particular video is just under four minutes and I think this does a really nice job of highlighting how JA has begun to evolve. And so I figured, let's take a moment and look at this and then we can talk a little bit further about it.
JA Discovery Center offers students a 360-degree learning system, covering relevance, authenticity and application in each classroom. JA BizTown and JA Finance Park provide the ability to experience their future perfectly. And JA BizTown students are given the opportunity to go to work for the first day. They're actually given a role and they have duties to implement in that role, anything from a sales associate all the way up to a CEO and CFO. They're working together as a team to run their business, get it off the ground, sell their product, pay back their startup loans. The Discovery Centers are incredibly important to the learning system played for the students, not just back in the classroom. Here, we give them 20 hours of curriculum to prepare for what is here and what to do that learning product for them. Arrive on site, it's included, it's their hand service, information that they started learning in the classroom and really put it through. JA Finance Park is an authentic simulation where students can experience their financial future. Righted by their life situation, students of that knowledge gain in the classroom to make the change that they want to make. Ultimately, building skills to confidently navigate today's financial world. Finance Park students are really getting a sense of what their financial future may look like. We give them a life profile so they're able to figure out, okay, with this much education, I can achieve this much of a salary. And they're able to start connecting those dots. And then they're making choices that we made as adults every single day. So they're figuring out, how much can I actually afford on my rental worth? Can I actually afford to buy a home? Or can I need to rent? Can I buy a car? You know, they're going through the budgeting step that we do as adults and they're finding out that while it's very exciting to have their own money, they also have a lot of responsibility to make sure that they are managing it correctly. Of course, they can probably tell if they grow up on it. But they still have to ask somebody who's not deeply invested in it. We can make our own lives, make our own. I learned that either. The discovery center includes authentic, real brick and mortar businesses that represent a presence both locally and internationally. Those teams already international, they're basically volunteers from relevant areas, providing guidance and their own path.
The Junior Achievement Center has been absolutely transformative for outreach and opportunity. It's a critical part of the development. They've built great business people here. And that is a really important power to have, a power to create. That creates really meaningful opportunities for generations to come.
JA Discovery Center gives students the opportunity to really experience their future. They are exposed to careers and pathways. They have never even known the business world. We're really giving the opportunity to open their eyes to what kind of future they could pursue.
Thank you, Cory. So prior to this year, programming looked like a volunteer that goes into the classroom once a week and teaches these lessons. There's five lessons. And that can still continue at, at the elementary school level. However, we have this robust experience that is in fifth grade and in seventh grade. In fifth grade with JA BizTown, you learn about financial literacy, community and economy, working career readiness, business management. There are teacher-led lessons, 13 teacher-led lessons. And then a culminating experience with a field trip to the JA Discovery Center. That's at Kodak Center on Loop 104. So that's one level, fifth grade. Now, that sequential learning in seventh grade, once again, there's teacher-led curriculum in seventh grade of 12 lessons. They learn about income, saving and investing, debt and credit, risk management and budgeting. And now they, with career exploration, figure out, what's my interest? What do I, what do I want to do when I grow up? What am I interested? What am I good at? And they, they get assigned an avatar or persona with an income. And now they have to pay their bills and, you know, depending on if they want to go to school or want to go into trades, what their income range could be. And now they're trying to, as a young adult, manage their bills and, you know, buy a car. Can they afford a car? Can they afford to rent or buy? So they have to make these adulting decisions. And we'll go to the next grade. So this is what it doesn't look like. It looks like a city. So if you think of the Strong Museum of Play and the little Wegmans in there, now multiply that by 17 different storefronts. And so in fifth grade, first thing students do when they get there is they vote for a mayor. So they learn about civics and community. They are already, will have a job when they get there. CEO of Medestory Foods, they could be a CFO of EY or Kodak. So they will already have a job. They will half the day be a business person. So they'll be an account manager, a CEO, CFO and do business-to-business interactions and sales and whatever tasks they do. The other half of the day, they will be a consumer. So if you're the CFO, you'll pay, you'll print up the paychecks. You'll pay your employees. Well, your employee will go to the bank and actually cash their check and then go and buy things in the stores, in the different storefronts. And then the other half of the day, like I said, they, you know, if you're the CFO, you have to go do a business loan. So you have to apply for a business loan, get it approved. So those are the types of things they learn in the different, in the different storefronts. And that's in fifth grade. So they learn all about those careers, budgeting, finance. And then when they get to, when they get to seventh grade with JA Finance Park, it's more personal finance versus, versus the companies. And they learn about all the different jobs there are. We do have some collaborative. We have the Skelley Foundation that's going to have an entrepreneurial incubator, which will show them those things. Manufacturing, business services, construction, higher education. So they'll get exposed to a lot of different healthcare, a lot of different careers that are available in our region and nationally. We're super excited about this. And I know that Spencerport in particular has been a partner of ours as we've gone through. We've been raising funds for almost 10 years, went through COVID and still continue to raise funds through that. And now we are ready to open January 2024. So our first cohort of students will be there January 2024. And like Marie said, because we already have an established partnership with JA, we are not considered a non-cohort commitment. And so what that means for us in terms of the financial commitment is that we have the cohort, basically cohort. Thank you. The dis, thank you. And so what that means is for $25 per student, a student would have exposure to either the 13 or the 12 lessons. Students are given a booklet, depending on which curriculum they're working through. And that also includes their visit to the Discovery Center in both fifth grade and in seventh grade. The partnership also includes opportunities for us to build volunteer experiences, again, with our community members, with our families. And really try to extend that opportunity for our students or even our older students like we've had in our previous, in our second grade classroom like we have this year. This also includes, this particular slide is mirrored of the seventh grade. So the seventh grade cohort would receive the same, basically financial package, if you will, $25 a head for the cohort because we would send all of our seventh grade students through. In fifth grade across our district, we would, we're looking to send two schools, two schools, excuse me, in the fall semester and then two schools in the spring semester. So they would complete the curriculum. We were looking to marry that against our DARE program. So half, half of the school district in the K-5 would be DARE, the other half would be Junior Achievement. And then we would flip-flop that. So that way our students that even though they're starting in the fall with JA and like Marie said, the Discovery Center opens in January of 2024 anticipated. Those students would still have an opportunity to visit in January. And then that second cohort of students would go through in the springtime. And then as far as our seventh graders go, our seventh graders were looking at building this into our FACS curriculum. So that way, one, it aligns with the New York state standards under our FACS curriculum. And two, all of our students are exposed to FACS. So it provides an opportunity for us to have equitable access for those students to have this experience at the seventh grade level as well. So that includes the curriculum. It also includes PD training for the teachers so that, you know, so they know what to expect. It's very key. It includes helping with mapping if they, you know, if teachers need help with that. But we'll be doing PD over the summer and, you know,
But we'll be doing PD over the summer and, you know, superintendent days if needed, but whatever it takes to get teachers up to speed. There are 40 of these across the nation. And there are another dozen that are in the works, and these ability studies being built in different stages. In Atlanta, there are, they're building a fifth one. And for JA BizTown, that's part of the state mandate, is that all students in fifth grade go through this curriculum and go through the simulation. So they're building a fifth one, have access to every different curriculum. So we're excited. This will be the first one of its kind in New York State. There's a lot of collaborative partners that we've been working with in, in this area. So, so we're very excited to bring it here and introduce them to people.
And finally, in terms of what's next for us here in Spencerport, like Marie said, professional learning is a part of the cohort package, the cohort pricing package. And so our teachers will be afforded two hours of professional learning relative to this. Like Marie mentioned, two different things would be focused on, the curriculum mapping in terms of where those lessons might fall within. And then also helping them to understand how to deliver the lessons in their content areas. And then we've also have proposed that we will have writing this summer for both of those grade levels, for fifth grade and also for seventh grade, to ensure alignment within their curriculums, that they have time, once they're trained in the, essentially, the curriculum kit, then they can use that with their curriculum writing this summer to be able to embed it directly into their curriculum. And with that, questions, suggestions?
Just curious, when our kids go to that experience, is that like, you do one district at a time, or how does it happen?
We, we will, the way your cohort is, you will most likely have just one schools there. You know, because you have multiple schools that can go at a time. Forty-eight to 50 is the minimum number to have the full simulation experience. And, you know, it can go up to 75 to 100, especially when you get to Finance Park. So there is an intent now to mix and match schools at this time.
And in the curriculum writing, the staff is aware of that, is that, is that a bigger load to them in terms of normal summer curriculum?
No, it's not a bigger load per se. I would say that one of the things that we've been working on with our fifth-grade teachers, knowing that we have DARE, Junior Achievement, then also with the new science investigation requirements. So students in grades three, four, and five need to complete so many hours, similar to a Regents exam. You have to complete specific investigations in order to be eligible to take your prizes, to take fifth-grade science assessment. So, so you have to do that as well. So we're just working with our teachers on just like curriculum.
Will we be implementing at the fifth grade and seventh grade, or do we have to wait until those fifth graders become seventh graders?
No, we're doing both simultaneously, yeah.
And another, just kind of a practical question, and I'm only asking because a few weeks ago, I went on a fifth-grade field trip to the Challenger Center. So I'm just curious if this field trip will be in lieu of or in addition to?
This is in addition to?
I'm glad to hear that, because the Challenger Center is also a great field trip. And they were already bragging about the Junior Achievement Center when I was there. Yes, yes. We're on the, they're on the first floor, we're on the third floor in the, what used to be the old gym at Kodak. At Kodak Center, where these are. They're very excited about it.
And just one question in terms of curriculum. So seventh grade is going into FACS, so is there stuff coming, I'm assuming, coming out of FACS?
Well, FACS is an interesting one, because per New York State, it's three-quarters of a credit, so we have a little bit of flexibility there.
And in terms of the curriculum for FACS, it falls within the, right, yeah, personal finance. Fifth-grade teachers, they're on board, not on board, feeling happy?
They, we presented to the fifth-grade teachers, and we were debating, baselating between presenting to fourth or fifth grade. And they said, we want it. So we didn't even get a chance to introduce you to the fourth grade. Yeah, so.
When I hear thirteen, I just want, you know, teacher voice, we hear thirteen additional lessons. They were very excited about it.
And that is our whole impetus, going back to the additional piece with DARE and science investigation. We just want to be very candid with them, because we wanted to put in fifth grade, but we wanted them to make sure that they weren't overtaxed. But they're the individuals that really, sure as you and myself, we want them.
And this is exactly, like, in working with a lot, like, we're targeting districts within an hour from Kodak Center, because having a four-hour simulation in between four and five hours, you know, or more than an hour away, it's a little difficult to get all that. And, and placement in schools with whatever program, there's actually three programs. There's BizTown, there's JA Finance Park entry level, and JA Finance Park Advanced. And the advanced is more robust simulation. It's for 10th through, or ninth through, 12th graders. And just trying to figure out where it lands, getting that teacher feedback. Like, okay, is this, and there are some districts that are like, it's too much, we can't do it. Or we can do this program now and then look at that, or, but just getting the teacher voice in it. And I know we did a presentation to the fifth-grade teachers, and it went over pretty well, because, you know, they're very, very interesting. And what are fifth grade, I think, I don't know if it's mine, but they're doing programming this year. They, they were doing programming, you know, old-school, traditional programming. So they've had exposure to Junior Achievement. Junior Achievement's been in that special school district for a few years now. So anybody who's had any type of exposure to it knows what kind of the curriculum looks like. Even though it is 12 to 13 lessons, they're about 45-minute, 40-minute lessons, they're very turnkey. And they align with the learning standards, so it just makes it easy.
Thank you both for coming. Appreciate it.
So moving on to some management pieces for the board. The first is to establish the dates for the organizational meeting. As you foresaw in the documents, we are recommending July of 11th to be the Board of Education organizational meeting, so it doesn't conflict with the July 4th holiday. So we're looking for the board to approve that for us.
Any discussion, Paul? Going to have a motion to approve it?
I'm making a motion to approve the date of the organizational meeting.
Michael Second, all favor, six oh.
I got to move a hairpin.
So the next items have to do with the BOCSE's two elections and the administrative budget. We'll manage the election piece first. Marcia, do you want to review the resolution and candidate people running for the board elections of BOCSE's?
Yep. So tonight, you'll be asked to approve the three candidates. The first candidate is from Wheatland Childy Central School District, and her name is Cindy Dawson. But all three terms will be July 1st, 23 to June 30th, 2026. The second candidate is Kathleen Dillon from the Churchville Childy School District. And the third one is R. Charles Phillips from the Grease Central School District. We would be voting on their candidacy, represent their school district.
And they're all exceptional advocates for public education.
So Gary, the, R. Charles Phillips, former Grease Board of Education, served six with the board president. That must have been a while ago, because it could have been a long time.
He's been on the BOCSE's board for a while, yeah. Yeah, can I have a motion to approve? Michael Second, David, all favor, six oh.
Yeah, I saw that. Thank you.
Moving forward then is the BOCSE's administrative budget. And again, Marcia, I don't know if you want to share?
Yeah, so it's a 1.8 increase this year, and our portion is $8,833,813. And that's what you would be approving this evening, Spencerport's portion.
It's just one.
Second, Megan, all favor, six oh.
All right, next one.
Hey, I did, I sort of missed not doing so. I want to welcome our board candidate, Marcia Henman.
Yeah, and we also have David Giavardo and Laurie Stone, and Jonathan Schalmo is the fourth candidate, who was not able to attend this evening. But I do have a random voting set for this evening, so that's going to help me. So I have four equally folded pieces of paper and hair. So the first one that we pull will be named first on the ballot and then sequentially through one through four.
David Giavardo.
Mr. Giavardo will be first on the ballot. Second on the ballot.
Marcia Henman. Jonathan Schalmo. Yeah.
It is.
And then Laurie's down there. And then finally, the process and the agenda for the annual budget hearing and the meeting. So we shared in one note the proposed process that we use, very similar to last year. Starting with the public hearing for the annual budget, making sure that there's time for questions in regards to the budget. And then after that presentation, moving right in to meet the candidates night, where the candidates have an opportunity to introduce themselves, answer questions from our moderator, and then close the evening with a final remark. Then our last presentation will be the financial report. Do you want to review?
All right, on the, for the general fund on the revenue side, as of right now, we're looking to have somewhat of a surplus of 1.1 million. The two areas that probably have, that are most unsure of right now is any changes to excess cost aid from a store perspective, and then sales tax. We'll receive the next payment in May, so that's probably when we'll see an adjustment. But based on last year's, we could probably save it there from $800,000 to $1,000,000 surplus. On the expense side, it's still difficult to really identify the full savings. There's some kind of things that are still encumbered. But right now, preliminarily, you can see the estimated balance on the far-right column. So we would be under budget about 1.4, which takes you to the last page of fund balance. Remember, fund balance is revenues over expense. Right now, we're looking at about $607,000 that we'd be able to contribute towards surplus. If we were to go to the maximum, 4% unappropriated, that would eat up about $188,000, which means about $419,000 to be available to put towards one of the reserves. Any questions on the general fund side? School lunch, I'm really trying to figure out a better way to report this, because it's apples and oranges. You're looking at, the, the expense side is fine, because that's consistent, but the revenues, they come in a different stream. So I can share a big picture. We are still projecting a loss due to the sales thing down. But we, I think there's good news coming out of Albany, that they're really looking to make that three meals for all.
Yeah, that, that'll be interesting.
Maybe as soon as next school year, it goes through.
I believe so.
Yeah, I understand.
Any questions or have a motion to accept the financial report, please? Second, right, all in favor, six oh. All right, meeting valuation, anything, any comments, concerns, questions about the meeting? Amazing. Okay, can I have a motion?
I make a motion that we enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of particular persons.
Second, please, Michael, all favor, six oh, moving into executive session at 15:48.